Please rise and join me. Trustee Clark, would you please leave your pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may be seated. This October 9th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees is called to order, and we do not have our clerk with us this evening due to some injury, so I will ask Joan Lebick, who is going to cover for her this evening, to please call the roll.
Trustee Mary Robb-Clark?
Present.
Trustee Michael Seadropka is absent. Trustee Timothy Heilenbach?
Present.
And trustee Tom Luffer.
And he is not here, but I do expect him to come in later. And Supervisor Wilt is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the record will reflect that the clerk is not available this evening. Okay, you have in your packets the minutes of the September 11th meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2018 Township of Riverside Board meeting.
I have a motion to accept the minutes of the September 11th, 2018 Township of Riverside meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, second by trustee Clark. Are there any additions or corrections that should be noted at this time?
I didn't notice any times.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Very good, then, in the absence of anything else, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Mary Robb-Clark?
Yes.
Michael Dropka is absent. Trustee Timothy Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Tom Luffer is absent right now, and Supervisor Vera Wilt?
Yes. The minutes are approved as presented, and we have several communications, and if you don't mind, if you prefer, I can read them, or if you want to read them, they'll be fine. I don't know that everybody has all of them. If you want, I can go through them, actually. Okay, so we have a thank you from the Battle of Franklin Trust for a donation that we made in memory of trustee Dropka's father, who recently passed, and the Dropka family is also being notified of that donation, so if anybody would like to see that, it's simply a thank you, and the trust has been established to protect and preserve the historic structures, funded battlefield reclamation efforts, and plans for the future to secure Franklin's place in history. The late Mr. Dropka was a big Civil War fan. Then we have a letter from the Friends of the Library of North Riverside, and this is, "The North Riverside Friends of the Library again pledged this year to make monetary donation to the Riverside Township Food Pantry if our summer readers read beyond their hourly goal during our summer reading program. We're happy to announce that our young readers made great strides again this year in achieving extra hours, which resulted in a donation of $159.10 for the food pantry from the North Riverside Friends of the Library. This year is the fifth anniversary of our sponsorship of the Read to Feed program. We're very proud of our young readers who took part in the Read to Feed program this past summer and in earlier years. Our children, while enjoying the wonder of books, also thought of others not so fortunate, and for this, we applaud them sincerely, Casabaitis Chair." So that's a welcome contribution to our food pantry. We're always needing to replenish. Then we have a memorandum from Riverside Police Department, the Office of the Chief of Police, Riverside Township Supervisor Wilt, and the Township Board of Trustees. "In March of 2018, Riverside Police Department was awarded a $7,000 grant from the township. I wanted to update you on Riverside Police Department's traffic unit squad that was redesigned, rebuilt, and funded by that grant. The squad conversion included its redesign inside and out, the purchase of a radar unit for traffic, and special markings to indicate the vehicle is a traffic unit. It was purposely marked differently than our regular patrol cars so residents would know it was a traffic enforcement vehicle. The conversion was completed, and the vehicle has been used numerous times, 42 to be exact. Our PD's traffic car is used every time we do traffic enforcement on the Illinois Department of Transportation's grant enforcement periods, and when officers are assigned to specific traffic enforcement throughout the village. Without this grant, the conversion of this vehicle to a traffic car would not have been possible. I've had two communities inquire about how they can design a vehicle like Riverside did. What I'm saying is that generous grant awarded by the township is going beyond our borders. Other municipalities are noticing the vehicle and are asking to copy our design for their traffic unit, and that influence is something to be proud of. Our thanks to Township Supervisor Wilt and the Township Board of Trustees for this generous grant. They also offer, I would be happy to bring the squad car to a township board meeting and park it in front of the building so the trustees can see it if they desire. I'm honored we continue to receive public safety grants from the Riverside Township Board. Our partnership always benefits the residents of the village and Township of Riverside. As police chief, I'm so grateful for our excellent partnership in public safety. Thanks again." And then, just today, I received this note from the Junior Bulldog Wrestling Club.[404.91][404.91]"Dear Ms. Wilt, on behalf of the Junior Bulldog Wrestling Club, I'd like to thank Riverside Township for their generous support of our program last October. In addition to the grant for the website, which was instrumental in growing our program, we also received a grant in the amount of $800, and those funds went to great use. We were able to provide a team T-shirt for every child in the program with 'Sponsored by Riverside Township' printed on the back. We also provided two wrestlers with a full scholarship, club fee waiver, and all equipment for the entire season. In addition, we expanded our recruiting efforts with the purchase of a banner with the team name and logo, and an advertisement in the Riverside Landmark. Finally, we were able to hire a trainer for the event that our program hosted, a mini meet with three other programs. That meet was a highlight of the early season for many of the wrestlers, and it gave them a real sense of what actual competition looks and feels like. We're hoping to continue doing those kinds of events into the future. We continue to aim to give kids in Riverside Township access to a great program where we teach the fundamentals of wrestling in a fun environment focusing on development, conditioning, strength, stamina, balance, coordination, and sportsmanship. Thank you again for your willingness to support our program. Michael Hall, Vice President, Junior Bulldog Wrestling Club." So, we always wonder how those grants are used, so that was good to hear. There's no action to be taken on that, so we'll move along to visitors' remarks. Does anybody have anything to share with the board this evening? This would be your opportunity. And please, identify yourself in advance, and then tell us the purpose of your visit.
My name is Steven Gretcheck. I'm a resident here at Riverside. I was here last October representing Indian Princesses and Indian Guide Program, and you so graciously gave us a grant. I told you at that time that I would come back and give you a report of what that grant was used for, so that's why I'm here today. So, we initially used the grant funds to have a sign made. The sign was used last year. You may have seen it. It was hanging in the park over the last couple of weeks. It was used again this year to let people know that scholarships were available, and let them know the registration was open. So that was the first use of the funds. That was about $170. We had that.
$170?
$170. We had that created by a local Riverside company here. So, next step was, we wanted to do some more advertising, so we had the opportunity to take out an ad in the landmark. That was $160 that we used for that ad in the landmark, again, to let people know that registration was open, and just to make sure that they were aware that there were scholarships that were available. I'm happy to report that we were able to award a total of, what is it, nine scholarships? So, scholarships are essentially $75 per person. That allows the father and child to come to a campout both Friday and Saturday night at local YMCA facilities, and so, again, there were total of nine scholarships across both organizations. We also were able to fund 19 scout cabin meetings. So, we used.
19 what?
Scout cabin meetings. So, we have events, depending on whether it's Indian Guides or Indian Princesses, that will meet either every other week, or sometimes, you know, once a month, where the father and child will do an event at the scout cabin. Those are $50 is what we have to pay to rent the scout cabin. The parents that are involved bring snacks for the girls, and then they'll also bring craft for the boys and the girls that'll be there. It's kind of a bonding event that, you know, the father and child go through at the scout cabin. So, total that ended up just under the $2,000 that was granted. That left us with $45 left over for the year.
Thank you. That's a very comprehensive report. We appreciate the details.
Well, thank you again for the grant. I mean, I think my personal experience was that the fathers that were there with their children that would not have been there otherwise were, I mean, it was great. It was great to see them there.
Great. Thanks. That's very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back.
Thanks for keeping us updated. Have a great night.
And I see that our assessor is stepping to the microphone as well.
Good evening. Fran Sitkowitz, Riverside Township Assessor. So, there's, we're kind of quiet at the assessor's office right now, so we thought we'd take advantage of their time and put together some ideas to conduct a property tax seminar on October 25th here at the Town Hall on the second floor. It starts at 7:00 PM. So, my goal is to have a seminar to dispel some of the misconceptions about property taxes. We have a lot of new residents that I'll be sending an invitation to in the mail. Anyone who's purchased a home since January 1st will get an invitation in the mail, and then anyone on our constant contact list will get an email for it. So, we'll have those notifications out by Friday, and I'm hoping for a good turnout. I think with the election, there's a lot of ads and a lot of misunderstanding about property taxes, so I think it's a very timely event. So, that's what we're going to be doing on October.
Thank you. What was the date?
October 25th, Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Thursday evening at 7:00.
I was at that last one, you're good. Fran, it was terrific. Terrific. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend this one, as I'll be at a rehearsal dinner, so.
You'll be kind of busy.
Yeah, you'll be busy.
So, we usually get a pretty good turnout.
You did. You had a great turnout, yes.
For this one as well. So, thank you. That's a great.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping us updated.
I have a question.
Sure.
If a house is in foreclosure, does that mean they're not paying the taxes, or?
Well, it depends.
Okay.
A lot of times, the bank does pay the taxes, but sometimes they don't. So, it kind of depends on the situation.
Okay, so that decreases then our tax revenue that we get, or?
No. Well, it doesn't, because if the bank isn't paying it after a year, it gets, it goes to the auction, and someone picks it up and pays it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yes.
There's a delay, but it.
There's a delay, but it does get paid.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Fran.
Are there any other visitors' remarks that aren't another part of the agenda? Very good. Then we'll move along. I don't have a lot to report this month. I did attend, however, an IMRF, the Pension Program Educational Meeting. It was the first one that was available since I've come into office, and so, both Marjorie, who administers a lot of it, and I, officially the administrator of it, attended. So, I learned a few interesting things, and we may have to revisit who we include on IMRF, in that we may have to rethink whether the trustees can be in it. So, that being said, I will be reaching out to them for a little bit more information, because it depends on what matters may have been in the record, what things that they, what resolutions may have been filed by the previous boards in terms of whether we can all participate or not. And so, that's a piece on the agenda, and otherwise, I'm still working on trying to get this room painted before we put up the acoustical panels. And we also hope to put, besides those walls, we hope to put in some of the other areas, but I'm trying to find the right fabric and paint so that it's as close as possible so it doesn't really interrupt the view of the room. And that's all I can think of at the moment. Kind of lots of busy work this month. Had a number of inquiries about special needs of residents and so forth. And now, on to trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything to report?
No, just as usual, the exercise class is going well. We had a storyteller for our October meeting who told Halloween stories, which I think that people enjoyed, and it was interesting, because we had two women that grew up in Germany, and they're like, "We didn't celebrate Halloween." So, because she asked for childhood Halloween stories. So, and they're, you know, they were like, "We didn't celebrate Halloween."
But did they have any scary story kinds of events that would, it would come up? Because sometimes the cultures have other opportunities to.
Yeah, no, they didn't mention anything about that. So, our November meeting will be a pizza party at the golf club, which I tentatively scheduled for November 6th, and our Christmas party is Tuesday, December 4th, which is also at the golf club, so anybody is welcome to join us. Just make sure that's.
Okay. Well, thank you for continuing organizing those events.
Yeah, Tuesday, November 4th is the Christmas party, and.
No, December 4th.
December 4th, yes. And Tuesday, November 6th is the pizza party.
Okay, so you don't have any meetings in the building?
We don't have any meetings in the building until the second Wednesday in January, which I believe is the 9th.
Second Wednesday?
In January, yeah.
That would be. Let's see. Let's double check. Okay, yeah, second Wednesday, but that's during the day.
It's during the day. It'll be during the day.
Lunchtime meetings, basically. All righty, thank you very much. Trustee Heilenbach, do you have anything before we get to the mental health? I'll come back to.
No, that's what I have.
Okay. And do we have anything, trustee Luffer? No? Then let's get back to the Mental Health Board reports.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. After much research and work by the Mental Health Board, we have come up with a few things that we've been waiting to do for probably the last six months. We have approved the Guidelines for Riverside Township Mental Health Board Support for Special Recreation Participation by Township Residents. In your packet, you will see that we have some guidelines. They are going to be starting to sign up. I have contacted a number of parents via the phone and said, "Go ahead, sign up." The beauty of this program is twofold. Number one is, it helps the township residents pay for part of these programs for special recreation. We are going to cover half the cost of a program, and we are also going to cover half the cost of their transportation. This is, the other thing about it is, is that we're the first Mental Health Board, as far as we know, in the state that's going to do this. So, this is trial and error. We don't know, you know, do we have enough money budgeted to it? The good thing is, is that we do have $10,000 budgeted to this. That lasts us through March. We think we're going to be okay. We may want to expand the program. I'm counting on the parents of these special needs children to give me some guidelines. Hey, what do you think? Is it working? What can we do? Can we move it up? Can we move it around? So, I think that's a real good thing. WSSRA is the one that handles Riverside and North Riverside for their special recreation. They are voting on this right now, but we don't see any problem. It's a formality. We will also get the guidelines from them that they approved, then we'll run it through our attorney on the Mental Health Board to make sure that everything's nice, cut, and dried. I'm real excited about this program. More excited than anything, I think, that we've done on the Mental Health Board so far. I'm also pleased to announce that we have given out money for our township partners for first responder for special needs, that training for them. The police department has a lot of training. They get it from, you know, wherever, you know, the, the provides, the township provides a lot also, but the fire department doesn't. So, we're going to put it out to the fire department, you know, because once the police leave and then they get, you know, the patient in the ambulance, you still should know to be comming, and so on and so forth. NAMI is the one that's doing this, and AMI, and we've given them a grant. We're also working on a couple of other things. The other thing is, that's real important, that's pretty high on our list, is getting a social worker in here a couple of times, three times a week, for residents of the township to come in, including weekend hours, thanks to Supervisor Wilt, where we can sit down, or they can sit down and be directed to where, you know, to a facility that'll be able to help them. And we have agreements in with our partners on the Mental Health Board that no Riverside Township resident gets put on a waiting list. We give them a lot of money. We make sure our residents don't sit on a waiting list, and that's very, very important. So, we want to bring in the social worker three times a week, three, four hours a day, and include maybe a Saturday hours, because people work during the week, and if they work during the week, you know, that Saturday hours would be good. Also, a phone number that we'll set up, that will direct them to an agency, or a social worker, or whatever. So, we're working on that. That should be within the next couple of months. As you can see, that we've been pretty busy. We also have a couple other programs that I can't discuss right now, because we haven't finalized them yet, so. But these are, I'm very excited about this special recreation funding.
Great. Thanks very much, Tim. I know you worked hard to get this all together, and it's a great service to our residents.
I have a question. What program fees would the residents incur?
Well, on behalf of the program, trustee Luffer, is, let's say, I'm just going to give you a program, horseback riding. Horseback riding, and I don't know what the cost is, is $50. So, and the transportation to get from home, from their home, to where the horseback riding is, is $6. I know that for a fact. It's all $6 with WSSRA. So, what happens is, they will go in and sign up at WSSRA, and then they will be, they're a Riverside Township resident, they will pay $25, and they will pay $3, and then we will be billed quarterly for that. Now, our consultant will go over to WSSRA and verify every one of these to make sure they're township residents, and on a quarterly basis, and then we will be able to cut a check with WSSRA. I should also mention that Brookfield C-Spar, we're in negotiations with them. They're very excited about this, so I would guess by the next meeting, we will have something done with C-Spar. So, our township residents of the Hollywood area at Brookfield will be able to do the same thing. We want to make sure that it's fair for us all.
So, the WSSRA, there's like a general fee, and they're in there, and if they, so the horseback rider would be like an enhanced program? Is that?
Well, no. It's for recreation, and what it does is, it builds, you know, skills, and it, and it, and it's something that they probably won't be able to do. They have, you know, riders that go along with them. It's recreation, so they can be with their peers, and this is so, so, so important to them.
Where's the line drawn between what the Village of Riverside, their tax levy and what they're paying for? Wouldn't, if we had a Riverside resident that was participating, wouldn't their program fees be covered by that membership?
No. All that does is make sure that they are in the special recreation group. WSSRA charges the village a fee for them to be a participant in this group, a participant.
You could, I think you could compare it to the fact that a village might have a recreation department, a regular recreation department, that it funds, but if you participate in any of the programs, there's a fee with each of those programs.
That's exactly right.
So, it's the same thing. So, that it simply establishes the partnership with the Special Recreation Association so that those programs are available within the community, and maybe, you know, maybe some of them will be housed within the community, and some will not.
It's a membership charge. All right, it's the fund.
It's a membership.
It's a membership. Right, so it's a membership, but they're the ones that have all the facilities.
No, no, I get that. I just, just unclear on what was being covered from the village's participation. So, any soccer, they signed up for soccer, it's $50, horseback riding, and so, every program they participated, there is out of pocket.
There is an out-of-pocket expense for every program they participated. And there are some rules that we have, and now, we can all change this as we go, and we plan on it. Again, we're flying by the seat of our pants, if you will, on this, because nobody else is doing it. So, we're the first, and I think it's going to be a real good program. I mean, the people that I've talked to are very excited about it. Every little bit helps, you know? They've got extra doctor's appointments, braces for certain items, so it's, every little bit helps, and they're very appreciative to the township for what we're doing here. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's a very good thorough report on it. Okay, under unfinished business, our committee has continued to meet regarding what we want to see in a website, and we did meet with Jennifer Fournier from Via Digerati, a local business right across the street from our office. It's their office, and we asked the questions that were troubling us. We stated the things that our committee feels needs to happen with a website, and I think our committee wants to present the agreement with Via Digerati for us to go forward on that.
Trustee Seadropka had mentioned that he would like to be in on this discussion. I don't know if that's possible, if the agenda allows moving it around like that, but he's, he's flying out to Houston.
Right.
Yeah, and he said, "I really want to be there for that." Could we table it?
Did you want to defer it for a month?
We can do that.
That's up to this, if we don't have a motion to go forward today, then that's exactly what we'll do. Do he have specific concerns?
I don't know. I think, I think he always has specific concerns. I think he just must make sure that it's heard. I don't know.
That's fine. You know what? We should all be in agreement on this. I have no problem with that.
Then we can defer this and continue on.
Table it for our November meeting, which is a little bit later. It's the third Tuesday in November for.
We should have our ducks in a row by then, correct?
Well, we, I think we pretty much have our ducks in a row.
You were on that committee vote, we're on it.
Join us, yeah.
Times when we met. I understand the sense that you had your own questions to ask, and why do we do things a certain way? We had some questions about, because this proposal does deal with growth-driven design, and we needed to know, what does that really mean, and what kind of growth can we have, and so forth? So, you know, it's up to you. If you want to defer it, we can defer it. If you want to vote on it tonight, we can do that, too.
Well, we should defer it. If he wants to.
Okay. Then it'll be deferred. Okay, then it'll be deferred until November. And now we're on.
Can I, I'll just ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
We, you know, we were meeting, and we decided some things. Do we need to meet between now and the November meeting to continue talking, or do we need to wait, not meet until we approve this?
Perhaps I can find out what trustee Drapka's concerns were, and maybe he would find a way to meet with us, and maybe we could get that taken care of before then? You think so?
Okay, all right.
Get the ducks in a row, so we can gamble next time.
Because in November, we do have grants to deal with, and that can take a little bit more time. So maybe we can find out. He's going to be busy for the next couple of weeks, and so then maybe we can meet after that.
Okay, all right. And then Jennifer is here. Do you want to say anything, Jennifer, or?
Perhaps for those who weren't at the meeting, maybe a kind of an overview.
Maybe I can just even talk about what growth-driven design is. Jennifer Fournier, Via Digerati, Riverside. So growth-driven design is essentially an agile method to understanding how visitors use your website, and then adapting those changes back into the website for the best usability. So what we would start out with is we would start out with the core functionality that you have on the TOI website, move that over, and then make sure that's functional, understand, get analytics on there, which we don't have any data on how people are currently using the site, so we don't necessarily know. You know, we have some ideas of best practices of organizing the information and how people might use it best, but getting true analytics for how people are using your site will inform what kind of content, what changes, what types of forums we can create, and things like that. So essentially, we would start out with a platform of a website within six weeks, and growth-driven design allows us to move much faster. So Mary Robb was saying about time, we are able to get something live within six weeks versus, you know, sitting down, mapping everything out over a twelve-week period, and then going live, but not really understanding how people are using it. So we can just get to the ground running faster, and we're able to adapt more fluidly.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Jennifer, can you come back to our?
Our November meeting. That actually, yeah, which would, that falls on the twentieth of November. Thank you, that's right.
I'll talk to trustee Drapka about giving his questions answered before the next meeting.
Absolutely.
I'll include you on that email, because I'll take that.
Right.
And me, will you include me on that email? Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right, then our next agenda item is under new business. We have several requests under our new non-standard use of the building. So the first request actually is from Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry, is from Amy Benson, and that is for the use of the auditorium for, you see it right there, for a party, for a private party. And that would be on Saturday, November third. The request came for it just the evening. The only conflict conceivably is that the Parks and Recreation Department holds a chess tournament that same day, but it's usually done by about three. We hope there won't be an overlap, but we can kind of rush them along. But this would be for your consideration, because there would be alcohol, but it's a private party, and they would be using, as you see, the auditorium and the kitchen.
And her new memo, she states, as well as alcohol, and anticipate that Labara will have the required insurance.
And unless that is the fact, that we wouldn't be able to do it. So that your approval would be subject to their fulfilling all of those requirements of the insurance.
Okay.
If not, then I would suggest to her that she approach her homeowner's insurer, because that's a possibility for a private party. It's not a big deal.
Right. So going forward, Decatur is normally going to have whatever insurance we need.
Hopefully.
Not necessarily.
Some will and some won't. Because they have already a Riverside license, it's probably more likely that they can transfer it, but that's something that they have to go through the village for.
Right. But if all we can, all we're doing is improve, okay, yeah, you can have your party on the third. What the person that has the party has to do is, they have to provide everything a couple of weeks before this party occurs. So all we have to do is approve these, and then if something happens, I mean, Supervisor Wilk will just say, no, I just can't, so.
Right.
We can't do that, so.
Going forward, if there's a local restaurant that has a liquor license, okay, Labara's catering again, okay, great, we're insured, we know they have their insurance.
We will always need to have that, that proof of insurance for each occurrence, though, for each of these events.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we want?
I do need a.
A motion, or do we want to do a motion for all three?
I think we should do each individually, just in case they have different characteristics.
I move that we accept Amy Benson's application for an event on November third, and the auditorium and the kitchen.
Okay, second. I have a motion by trustee Lupfer, second by trustee Clark, to approve the request for the non-standard use of our facility on November the third. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next request is from Young Life for a fundraiser, and the first sheet that was in your book was just a description, but then today they brought in the actual application with the proof of insurance that we requested. They will not be serving alcohol, but they will allow people to bring in their own, because it's a trivia night, and those typically are a BYOB event.
Is that allowed by the village?
We did require them to check on that. They crossed the hall and came back and said, right, that it's not necessary, because there's no alcohol being served or sold, but we still will require the insurance, because it'll be consumed.
Can, I thought Young Life was for high school people.
I think it's a young adult group.
That's changed, Mary Robert.
Yeah, no, it's.
And we know these people that are bringing their own alcohol are over twenty-one.
Well, we certainly do intend for that to be the case. I believe that this is more of a fundraiser for the benefit of the youth programs that they run. So it's to engage perhaps the parents and other relatives and friends. So what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve a Young Life fundraiser for November tenth.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And I have a second by trustee Clark, to approve the request from Young Life for a fundraiser event in the town hall on November the tenth. Any discussion?
Yeah, there is some discussion. I'd like to have this BYOB kind of written into a policy. It seems to be a gray area. It's nice that it's coming up early, so it doesn't surprise us to down the road.
Right.
But, I mean, if kids are present, or, we just need to have some kind of policy on the books.
Very good. Duly noted, and that's a good point. It's somewhat like a private party in that regard, but it's a fundraiser in that they charge an admission, so, you know, it's a hybrid. All right. Any other questions or discussion? Then we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And the third event just came in also, a brand-new application from the Frederick Law Olmsted Society to hold an event here for approximately one hundred and fifty people, and they indicate that there will be no admission charge. It's apparently just an event for their organization, closed party, and they also want the auditorium and the kitchen. The event would be on Friday, January eighteenth, and there is no conflict. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the Frederick Law Olmsted Society's party for January eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach, second by trustee Lupfer, to approve the request for a party on January eighteenth for the Frederick Law Olmsted Society. Is there any further discussion or questions? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next point is a memo that we received. There's a new law that apparently TOI was actually the organization that promoted it, requiring the clerk to attest all checks written by the township. So only the, so it, as you see from their memo, it raises some questions, because most banks don't care if you have another signature, if that person can't be the sole signer. The clerk, by law, only the supervisor can sign checks, so we're still trying to figure out what's going to happen on certain electronic fund transfers and things like that, and we will have to set up, since the clerk is not in the office on a frequent basis, we would have to set up a system to do that. I've also reached out to our law firm, and they, they also, they actually met with one of the legislators who was involved in the passage of this, and so they are trying to come up with some possible other alternatives that they think, other than the, just the proposals that township officials of Illinois have suggested. A rubber stamp may be the way it's used, but then you need proof that it was authorized, so that's a clumsy way of doing it. I don't know why they're recommending that as a good thing.
I could tell you that the previous board explored that, too, when Supervisor Tusher was going in for testing or something, and, well, what about checks and stuff like that? He, the supervisor's the only one, and there is no stamping. You cannot rubber stamp anything.
Right, well, and that's, that's on the actual endorsement of a check, but this is actually, this is a double-checking mechanism, which is part of what the trustees do in reviewing warrants as well. So I'm not sure what the thinking on this was, except that, wouldn't you know it, in the news today, there was news of the township that did have some fraud brought upon it. So I think we've been very fortunate that that's not a common thing, but when it happens, it happens big time. So we're investigating further. This is only the ninth of October, and we have to have something in place the first of the year, so we will try to make that as painless and efficient and yet responsible as possible. You also have a copy of, as you can see, the actual changes to the statute don't really say much, so we'll see. We will deal with it as best we can. Also attached on the next item, we have the annual treasures report. I'm actually submitting this for your review. It's already been submitted, because it was due in September, and it, we have to always wait for a number of things to happen before we can put that together, but it has already been submitted to the parties that need to have it, and in fact, this is one of those that we, we couldn't get ahold of, Leanne was on vacation, and so we had to have the deputy clerk sign, which was allowed. But it's here for your review. It's also been published, so this is the annual kind of report card of the township financially. It says here approval, but actually, my duty is to present it to this board. The next item we have is the draft of the township newsletter. Andrew worked on this. He even, didn't really expect him to do that, but he even did this on a day off, took it home, because it's more quiet there, so that he could work on it. Please look it over and let us know as soon as possible if there's anything that you would like to see changed or highlighted differently, or if we've really missed the boat on something, please let us know by the end of this week, because we'd really like to go to press as soon as possible on this. You notice that some of the information in here is about voting, so obviously, we'd like to get this out in the very near future. Okay, thank you, and I will convey that to Andrew, too, that it looks nice.
Absolutely.
But like I said, if you find that we've missed something, or should have highlighted something else, as long as we can fit it in, in about the same space, maybe we can, maybe we can trade it out, but it's pretty well ready to go. Okay. Then you have a list, and you do not have to decide on this now, but this is roughly the time of year. When we look at the schedule for the, for next year, we can, if you want to digest this and take a look at, if there's too many holidays, or the wrong holidays, or anything like that, you can look at that, but this, these are the proposals for the meeting dates and holidays for the township for 2019.
Is the next October meeting again after Columbus Day?
Actually, let me see, I think it probably is. I think so. I don't have the, well, maybe I do. Columbus Day is usually the.
Second Monday.
Second, yeah.
No, wait a minute, for.
I'm not sure that it is, actually.
We're on.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not, actually. Take a look, because Columbus Day, yeah, no, Columbus Day off would be the fourteenth, and the, yeah, no, it's right above. If you look at the upper list compared to the lower list, our meeting would actually be the week before Columbus Day, because the first is on a Monday? No, Tuesday.
Yeah, the first is on a Tuesday.
Right. Thank you.
Our meeting would be October eighth, and Columbus Day would be October fourteenth.
This is, oh, wait, I'm sorry. That's this year, isn't it? Yeah. No, that's all right. Yeah, no, but as you can see, in the list above, the meeting would be on October eighth, and Columbus Day observation would be on the fourteenth. Here's 2019. Right. All right. So if you want to vote on it tonight, let me know. If you want to digest it, let me know that as well.
For the meeting?
Yeah, meetings and, and close, closing days.
We can vote on this.
I make a motion that we approve the Township of Riverside's public notice for the township calendar for year 2019.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach to approve the public notice for the Township of Riverside calendar for year 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Clark. Any discussion? Now's your chance to make changes if you want to. Hearing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next item is just the annual approval. The food pantry typically provides Thanksgiving and Christmas or holiday dinners. In the nature of turkeys with all the trimmings for Thanksgiving, they would be handed out then, like, the week before, usually the Thursday, Friday, and the Monday before Thanksgiving, and then Christmas, we do a similar thing. We do it the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday closest to Thanksgiving, to Christmas. The Thanksgiving ones are a little bit earlier, because those turkeys are frozen. The Thanksgiving ones are a little bit earlier because those turkeys are frozen. The hams are not, so. This is, this is what it cost us last time, and I expect that there might be some increase. We never know, but, and we never know until then how many we're going to actually need. Usually, as fall comes, we have an uptick in the participation in the food pantry itself. And as you can see, Thanksgiving seems to be a bigger response than Christmas in terms of accepting it.
We made that verse of the freezer already, right?
Yes, that freezer, that's from last year. These are the numbers for last year.
Estimates.
So, these are, yeah, this is actually what we actually paid last year, what all the expenses were involved with it last year. And, yeah, the freezer is there. We've used it to store ice for, before trips, and because we don't have an ice maker, it's a good place to store extra things. Very good. So, do I have a motion for us to go forward with holiday meals from the food pantry?
Stop moving.
I have a motion by trustee Clark.
A second.
And a second by trustee Hylenbach to go forward with preparing and distributing holiday meals at Thanksgiving and Christmas from the food pantry. Any discussion?
This is one of my issues. I think we can do better as a township and as a community, and activate our community to help support our food bank a little better. I'd like to reach out to the community, get some people who might want to volunteer on that, maybe hold a fundraiser, but I think as a community, we can feed our own. I don't think we need to have the township continuing to supplement the community's efforts, so...
It goes hand-in-hand with the food pantry that we have.
That's what I'm saying.
And we do get support for it, and that's why in the newsletter, there's also mention of that. But you mean to solicit more support?
Solicit a little more support. You know, the cans and that kind of thing are good, but we also obviously need some cash to help purchase some things. So, I think we could activate our community a little bit more if we had a little bit more of a push from the board. I'd be willing to take the lead in doing that push. It'll take me several meetings to actually get some action on it, but once I've done some work, I'll come back and report on kind of what we're thinking about.
Okay. Great, thank you. So, I don't think we voted on that motion yet. We have a motion on the floor to go forward with the holiday meals. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next item is a reminder that we have a pretty interesting meeting coming up from the trustees' division of the Township officials of Cook County. You did receive a signup genius reminder about it, so please do let us know, because the reservations are requested by the end of this week, no later than Monday, so that they know how many, and we'd like to cut a check for that. And then, the final item under new business is the TOI Annual Educational Conference in Springfield, which will be held. This is why our November meeting is late, because we want to make it possible for the elected officials to attend this. There's a lot of good information, a lot of sharing of information there. So, please do let the home, the office know if you plan to attend, so that we can make those reservations for you. And, but I would encourage you to, we kind of need to make the reservations for hotel and the meeting at the same time, because they give priority on the hotel to those that are attending the meeting. So, please let us know as soon as you can whether you'll be able to attend. All right. So, all that is left. Yes.
Banquet is Monday night this year. Is that correct?
I think it always is, isn't it? And then Tuesday...
I didn't know it was on Tuesday night, and then they've shortened this conference by a day. It used to be over Wednesday at lunchtime. Now, it's over Tuesday at lunchtime. So, Sunday night was the opening reception, and then Monday night, there wasn't really anything. Well, there was kind of like a party, but everybody went to dinner on their own, and then Tuesday was the banquet. But as I said, they have shortened it by a day, so I believe the banquet is Monday night, and then we go home Tuesday after lunch.
Right.
Or, well, actually, the annual meeting, I think, is at 3:00 or something.
I think it goes till about 3:00, because then the different divisions meet.
Well, they meet at lunch, right? And then, there's an annual meeting that meets like at 3:00.
Right, where they elect the, the actual officers of the association. So, yeah, they have compacted it, so hopefully, there won't be a lot of lag time. I'm not certain there is going to be another educational event for supervisors, but there's that gap in between, and last year, that was very awkward, because I was there for meetings on Saturday, and then there was nothing on Sunday until quite late. So, I don't know. I have to consider whether that's really worthwhile, because it does not give the certification for the general assistance. It just is additional information. All right. Then, we'll just, please do look over the materials. It's also in the Perspective magazine, so please look that over and do let us know as soon as you can whether you're planning to attend. And now, we are down to the warrants. Gentlemen, with one of you, please. Okay.
Joan, I'll give this to you.
She already has a copy of it. So, you just need to...
Trustee Hylenbach moves that the board authorizes and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $10,162.85, as presented to this board on the 9th day of October 2018.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the general warrant in the amount of $10,162.85, to approve them this 9th day of October 2019, 2018. Rushing things. Any questions?
A second motion?
I have a motion and a second by trustee Clark, and this will be recorded as a roll call ball. So, please call the roll.
Trustee Mary Robb Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drocka is absent. Trustee Timothy Hylenbach?
Yes.
And trustee Tom Looper?
Yes.
And Vera Will, supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by trustee Hylenbach that the board ratify unauthorized payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $1,013.31. The payroll warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $17,401.04. The health warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $1,717.86. The petty cash warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $108.26. The general assistance warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $1,918.92. The township radio players warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant for October 2018 in the amount of $420.08. All of the above as presented to this board on the 9th day of October 2018.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Tom. Tom, second. Seconded by trustee Lupfer. Then, to restate, we have a motion to approve the warrants as follows. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,013.31. Payroll warrant in the amount of $17,401.04. The health warrant in the amount of $1,717.86. The petty cash warrant in the amount of $108.26. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $1,918.92. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $420.08. Please call the roll.
Trustee Mary Robb Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Drocka is absent. Trustee Timothy Hylenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Tom Looper?
Yes.
And supervisor Vera Will?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Stop moving.
Second.
A motion by Hylenbach, second by Clark to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.